Well, I guess I better go first. As you know, I am meeting with the Council of Forest Trustlands Counties. Spent together the group of five commissioners to represent the fifteen counties and we are continuing to meet with the governor's staff. Every Friday morning at nine thirty and. We are in the process of preparing a communication so that all the other counties and commissioners. Will know kind of what we're doing, have a little bit of insight as to the conversations we're having. That has, that's because there's just been some attention. To, from the media and also from other commissioners as to just kind of get an update. So that's what we're going to be working on. It's been a very good conversation. As you remember, we are talking about a thirty plus percent reduction in timber harvest, which is going to impact. Significantly, Telma County and Clatsop County. And all of their special districts, they actually have two school districts that are one hundred percent dependent on timber. Revenues rather than being a part of the school fund at the state.
Wow.
So some real significant economic impacts of this habitat conservation plan if it goes into effect. Is how it impacts timber harvest. And so that communication. Will be coming up probably in the next week or so, and I'll certainly make sure that it's forwarded on to everybody on the commission.
And for everyone who's listening to quantify significant impact. Excuse me, for the two counties he mentioned. This new plan has a further reduction of over fifty-four percent for those two counties and. An additional thirty-four percent to Washington County.
Correct.
So. So this adjective of significant is in quantified terms. Yeah.
Absolutely. So. Yeah. So, yeah, no, that's been very educational. I did reach out. I represent three counties Columbia, Washington and Clackamas. So I have reached out to my two county counterparts and had conversations with them as to. What they hope we are able to achieve here. And so I will. Like I said, you'll get more information on this sometime soon on this and it's, it's very informational and. The governor's staff is doing a great job. And so I've been impressed so far. He's, Jeff is a good guy.
Is he, is, is the governor's office rep in line with the estimates that we got from Brandon Hirsinger?
You know. They don't want to talk about that. They want to talk about what's the financial impact to the counties. So initially their ask was. Give us a number. And the response that they got back from the five commissioners was.
Not this.
Number's too big.
Yeah.
The governor doesn't have that kind of money and certainly not that kind of livelihood. Remember, this is a seventy year HCP. So the governor. Can only give us money for a couple of years and then. We're back to begging again. So. So yes, it's an interesting conversation that what's going on and there's, I mean, there's a whole bunch to it. There's the ripple effect of. Losing mills, losing jobs. How the economy is impacted. So.
Okay.
It's a huge, huge deal. Jeff Huntington is the. Person from the governor's office that is leading this conversation and he's doing a great job. Yesterday, we had the ribbon cutting for the Cornelius Pass project and the Reedville Trail project. Chair, you were there and Nefisa and I were there and spoke, mayor of Hillsborough. It's a great project. What's most interesting, I think, for me is, I mean Cornelius Pass. Is projected to have handle thirty thousand cars in the future. And so that's a huge north, south. Arterial going from basically Sunset Highway, West Union to clear through South Hillsborough. So that's a very important project. But also alongside of that is the Reedville Trail. And considering that, you know, I'm on the Council Creek Trail. And I'm also on the Salmonberry Trail. It's good to see a trail that is twelve foot wide. That's paved. So we can envision what that may look like when we're talking about the Council Creek Trail because I'm going to segue to that. We had that meeting last night. And. And we decided to go with a twelve foot trail throughout the entire six mile corridor. Because we had some options to do that. We've got a wider right of way, but twelve foot, we can, we believe we can afford twelve foot. And then maintaining it and. And having access to heads and bicyclists and all of that. So that's a, that's a fun project as well. It's going to take too long to build that thing. They're still talking about twenty-six. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, somewhere around there. And I'm hoping that we can accelerate that a little bit, but it was a good meeting. The, just to update you, there's basically four votes. In this for forest grove Cornelius Hillsborough and Western County. So we get to make the decisions on that, but there's plenty of others sitting around the table that we include in the conversation. So with that. I'm going to have coffee with Kemp Shui with. This week and then continue on our Friday morning meetings with the governors. So there, I'm out of my time. How far, how far was I Kevin? About five minutes passed. I was close then.
Okay, who's next? Commissioner Fire, Commissioner Rogers?
I would prefer to sure.
Yeah, yes, Chair Hendon, I can go and first Chair Hendon, sorry and about this modification of how I participate our board meeting this morning and. I think I notified everyone but you because in my mind you were on vacation. I had you written down all, all my documents that you're on vacation. So.
Starting tomorrow.
It's starting tomorrow. Yes, I joined you in that celebration, but I didn't mean to rush you out the door, but sorry about that. But and thank you everyone and, and thank you to the staff for having the opportunity to participate virtually. I'll be quick. And yeah, last week we had Clean Water Services Learning Day. Thank you to the Clean Water Services staff, Diane. I always walk away learning a lot. And surprisingly, yesterday with the heavy rain, we had a lot of our storm drainage were blocked and we were a bit of a. Panicky mode in our neighborhoods, not, not too panicky, but I think we had to. Get out our rakes and get some leaves out of those storm drains, but. It just made me reflect back on our learning and what we've learned and who do we contact if in the event that happens or what do we do? So. A lot of resources offers offered on your website. So thank you. For those days and all the information that's posted on Clean Water Services website. I last week I.
You gave Mark Chockers a call. Is that what you did to FISA? Mark came out with a rake and.
Probably.
Cleaned out those, those things. Although that's his job personally.
I embarrassed myself, but I was so close making that call, but I think I referred to educating myself, just checking out some of the accessible. Resources. I was like, let me check on Clean Water Services on what to do. But I didn't call Mark. But that's close.
He was missing that.
Last week I attended the virtual information meeting about Intel's. Application for air quality. So. Intel submitted an application for to DEQ to modify the standard air contaminant discharge permit. And they submitted this permit change for their two facilities, the one in Hillsborough and then one in Aloha. And both facilities obviously emit air contaminants and, and because of that they are regulated by DEQ. Was a lot of good information, a lot of stuff that I learned that I had no idea about it, new terminologies into my vocabulary. But. There were presentation to Cleaner Air Oregon. They talked about the requirement, the program requirement. We also heard a presentation from air quality permit folks. And they talked about the air quality analysis and some of the modelings that they're doing and what's required by Intel. And where do we go from here? So the next steps after that meeting is. DEQ will issue a permit, but it's not an issued permit. They would have to post the, the, what they're recommending and then the public will have an opportunity. There will be a period of comment. So I look forward to staying on that topic and see how we. Go from there. There were a lot of questions that people asked that I tried to write it down and every one of them required multiple. Investigation or more research, but. And the takeaway was that I'm so glad that there are people out there that really are. Care about different topics that are not necessarily a burning, heart burning to us, to many people. But they're, they are to them and they ask these really hard questions. And so I appreciate the, the folks that are looking. Paying close attention to this topic and staying, staying engaged. I also attended and I just want to make a call, a shout out to LUT staff. I attended their, their fall development. They hosted twice. These developments. Forums. And so this was their fall and it was a great turnout. LUT staff, you did a great job, your outreach. There were a lot of developers. There were a lot of good. Information that you shared and a lot of improvements to your permitting process that you presented that were very much welcomed and appreciated. So good job on that. And last week I also had a, one of our really engaged constituents. None other than Dale Feek. I had a great meeting, Dell. Thank you. I hope you're in the room. Thank you for meeting with me and yay, I see you. Thanks for meeting with me and I really appreciated our, our conversation. Obviously it was. Mostly focused on climate issues and also the intel, the movement that are coming from intel with the semiconductor. So thank you. And I'm still reading some of the materials that you shared with me. So thank you for that. I also. Attended the, the CAT tour with, with Chair Harrington and I'm and. Many legislators were there and the staff, I just want to give a shout out to the staff. You really did a great job. You fed us really good food. And you answered a lot of good questions and more importantly, you shared everything. About the cat and really educated. And also there were a lot of new information that I felt like I learned. So. Thank you for that and, and good luck to the next commissioners that are participating in this tour. You'll be impressed. As well, as Commissioner Willie mentioned, and I'm out of time, I'm, so I'll, I'll skip the Cornelius Pass Road and the Reedville Trail ribbon cutting projects. That was a great event. But more importantly, I attended the WCCC meeting yesterday and had a really good discussion about. The low income toll program. That is going to be in front of OTC soon and just wanted to flag for WCC members if they wanted to. Document some of their, some of their support and the recommendation I heard from them around this and how they felt about the low income report and. Perhaps entertain the idea of putting a letter together to submit to OTC from WCCC. So it was a really good meeting, good discussions. And the other big thing to flag. I'm not sure what the history has been in the past, but WCCC is having a retreat on December fourth. And if in the past, only the commissioner that is part of WCC attends, it might be. Worth, you know, at least two or three of us attend this retreat. So Chair Hendon, you and I are the. Attendee and the alternative. So December fourth is the retreat. I don't know if your calendar is, works, but I wanted to call that date out for jury. In case it works for your calendar.
Thank you, Commissioner Fire, a lot of, a lot of activity there. So.
That was, that was brief. Yeah. You can be back for vacation by December one.
Gee, I don't know.
You go, you might not come back, not by preference.
I might skip the whole month of November, huh?
That's right.
No, I don't think so.
We'll, we'll send the sheriff after you, Jerry. You're not back by then.
You might enjoy that.
Yeah. Jerry, thank you for your work on that. Real quickly, that, that's important work that you're doing. I don't know how you're going to handle things. I think it's in it, or someone. They missed oil, gas fields. That's even a different funding source. So you got a lot of. I don't even know about that and I'm not going there. Oh, yeah, that's. Having trouble with trees. Oh, yeah. They don't get stayed basic or today or summer because of that. Sorry, I was unable to attend the ribbon cutting. That was an important project we've been working on every month for years. A little busy yesterday until late in the night.
Next season, now done.
I'm now back to being a humanoid somewhat, I guess, but appreciate that. Thanks for the meetings last week. I. Tend to tell or by Zoom on Friday because I needed to do that, but you did a great job. All the topics were important. The only thing that probably you all may want to weigh in and if you don't, that's fine too. This Thursday I am attending a meeting at what they call the, the AC, which is twelve and Business Advisory Council. And it's pretty. Pretty clear that they're going to support a motion to their chamber to say that if there's going to be tolling, then. Public has a right to vote on that public down that, that door. It's IP four. And they're asking me, I clearly said that this board is not taking a position. I might just so that you know. I'm a member there. Our firm is a member there. So I take one that's separate from this board. They're saying Clackamas County is now taking a position. Cities are taking a position. Where are we? And so if we are nowhere, that's fine. I would certainly like if you have a position or collective position. To articulate, we're thinking about it. We're studying it. We don't, you know. That's something we have bandwidth with right now. I'm a little, a little in a difficult position to say, I don't know.
You are welcome to exercise your vote as an individual commissioner anytime.
Well, I appreciate that.
We don't have the time right now to work on their timeline. We've provided direction to our staff, as you well know, that with regard to tolling that. We wish to be efficient with our time and as such, we are looking to support the positions of the cities. Proximate to the area of tolling. Does that mean that we want to join in? In. Any sort of legal action, not necessarily. But yeah, that's our, that's our position.
Very good. And I will get back some of your time because Nefisa was very short and took half a mine. Why took Pam's mine? Oh, I know.
Oh, there you go.
Maybe I'll give the chair mark my rest of my time. There. He never gets it.
Alrighty. Thank you, Commissioner Fire, for attending that. Intel DEQ. Meeting on Wednesday night after our long CWS. Day, my brain was tired, so I opted to not attend that. I had previously reviewed the information for their application and. Yes, what they're applying to do is significant. It's a doubling of their permit levels in all kinds of. Different chemical compounds. So I certainly hope that they will be installing appropriate. Scrubbers and whatnot so that the neighborhoods within a five mile radius. Are not harmed by such chemical processes. I wanted to make sure to highlight that I attended the Metro Strategic Targets Town Hall. Last Thursday where they shared targets specific to three different categories, environment, economy and housing. This was the follow on to that meeting Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Willie that you and Commissioner Trese had participated in. I thought that the, the meeting and the information was very well done. I could follow the explanations, not only verbally, but through the slides. They were clear, graphical. I did take pictures of the different slides that they presented. Stephen Roberts was able to. Zoom into the meeting while it was in progress. They changed the Zoom link. So I was part of a cadre. Oh, a good twenty folks that were hanging out in a Zoom meeting where nothing was happening and finally a very kind staff person. Came online and said, oh, we changed the link, the Zoom link on you. So here's the new Zoom link. We'll look forward to seeing you over there. So. We all hopped over there and joined the meeting in progress. But I haven't heard or looked yet to see if they posted the slides. So I'll, I'll look for that today. And send those to you. They're planning on, in terms of next steps, moving forward with. They called this a work session and they're planning another work session and plan to adopt. Their strategic targets by resolution before the end of the year. So, yeah. We had a TCBP meeting last Wednesday, really just worked on the status of the implementation of the goals and objectives that we'd previously. Outlined. So good work happening there. And yes, I very much look forward to vacation. Yesterday, oops, by the way, that's why I have this document in front of me. I had the monthly Chair Mayor's meeting where I highlighted for them what. Are the major things are that are on our plate, the fact that we had the public safety and justice initial paper, hoping to get. Few refinements on that and then. Setting up a presentation for them. Our discussions around the initial strategic plan, levy planning, and then before the end of the year. Status on ARPA. So. Yeah. That's, that's pretty much it. So onward ho we go. Yeah. Thank you for holding down the fort next week. Do good work. And then when I get back, we'll have a round table together. It'll be the first week of November. Holy smokes. Yes, yes. So that's it for me. Oh. Why don't we do the two letters? While we're at it, we have two letters for consideration. The first one is to the. National Recreation Trail Program Coordinator. Indicating that we are in support of designating the Banks-Bernonia State Trail. As a national recreation trail.
Yeah.
Commissioner Fire, you thumbs up? Okay. One of two down. The second one is with regard to. A solid waste and recycling and rate setting. So our staff, Thomas Eggleston, has put together a memo. For us to consider to urge the Metro Council to continue to work with the. Private waste companies to ensure that there is transparency in rate setting. And I know a couple of jurisdictions have for at least the last. Eight years or so had some questions about the private transfer station rates. As compared to the metro public transfer stations. So. Any questions or comments on that draft letter?
That's a good letter, Thomas. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, you got thumbs up on both letters. Terrific. Now leadership communication.
Good, good morning Chair and Commissioners, and I'd like to ask Danny and Lisa to come up to the table, please. I do have a few exciting introductions again today. So I would like to introduce. There's actually going to be three. Two introductions here. Danny Ledzma is our newest Assistant County Administrator. So she is taking the, over the portfolio that Rachel Fuller had. So that includes land use and transportation, cooperative library services, economic development, Westside Commons and also ARPA. Danny will also assist with ongoing implementation of our Design the Future initiative and support the organization. And our continuing evolving strategic planning processes throughout our organization. Danny comes to Washington County after serving nearly five years as a senior advisor in the Superintendent's Office for Portland Public Schools, where she was one of the key leaders in their strategic planning process. She also served as a policy advisor for two governors, Kate Brown and John Kitzhopper. And also a policy director for the former Portland City Councilor Nick Fish. She spent a total of twelve years in various positions with. The Portland Housing Bureau. And I highlight the Portland Housing Bureau because what I learned of interest yesterday. Is that Danny and also Molly Rogers, which Molly somewhere, oh Molly's back there, our new housing director. Actually were side by side cubes in Portland and started within a week of each other. Good for you. So now starting as colleagues in Washington County. So Danny, would you like to share anything with the board?
Sure. I'm just really just honored and really excited about the opportunity to be able to serve the people of Washington County. I'm really thrilled to be part of the team. I'm ecstatic about Tanya and all of the rest of the ACAs and I just, I really think that there's so much opportunity and so much. So much potential to do great, great things. And so it really is thrilling to, to be able to wake up every day and, and think about like. All the, all the potential and all the good things. So thank you so much for the opportunity. Hope to work really well with all of you. And if there's anything I can do to be helpful, please let me know.
Welcome to Team Washington County.
Why did you go so light on the portfolio? I mean, it's just because she's new? Is that why?
We got to start somewhere, right? And then I would like to introduce Lisa Takich. She is our new Chief Human Resources Officer. Lisa has over ten years of operational leadership experience. In the fields of human resources and risk management. In addition to her recent position with the city of Vancouver, which included additional responsibilities as the Risk and Safety Manager for two years. She also served as Property and Liability Program Manager for the Port of Portland and Risk Manager and Safety Officer for the City of Key West, Florida. Prior to her public service experience, she spent sixteen years as an attorney, twelve of which were in private practice in Cleveland, Ohio. Of note, and I think just speaks to Lisa's experience is outside of county hours. City of Vancouver has asked a contract with her to get through some HR needs with their city, city council and bargaining units through the end of the year. So I just think that speaks to your. Expertise. I also know one of the, the, well, the deputy city manager in Vancouver and I received a text that just said traitor. And so I knew. That Lisa must have made her announcement. So we're really happy that you're here. And one, one thing Pam, Commissioner Trese had, was part of Lisa's interview process and. I think Commissioner Trese would speak to this if she were here, but Commissioner Trese was very impressed. When Lisa had asked her, so what does the board, what is the board's perspective on One Washington County and Design the Futures? The board actually behind. Where the county as far as the operational and administrative position is going and. Commissioner Trese, of course, continued to talk about the importance of continuing to evolve the work of Washington County and service to our community and the value of One Washington County. So. That was great alignment that Lisa saw.
We are One Washington County together.
Thank you. I am so honored to be here. I have a lot of energy and excitement that I'm going to, that I'm going to bring. I love team building and the HR team currently seems to have a, just a wonderful talent and a lot of skills. And so I'm looking forward to optimizing, you know, what, what they bring forward and also being a strategic advisor to, you know, all of you and the ELT and the management team here at the county. I've been looking forward to a role like this and, you know, being able to, you know, interact more on a higher strategic level. So, you know, hopefully. I have some opportunities and can, you know, provide more of that One Washington County and then also translate that into. One, one HR team and, you know, get them to gel and move forward so we can support the departments that do the important, important work for the community. So thank you.
Well, I also want to thank David Martinez for serving as the interim HR Director. Really good job, David. I know you helped energize the staff while they were really stepping up to the incredible. Effort to recruit and retain our valued workforce. So thank you so much for that. Ms. Angie and I. Had the opportunity to have lunch with the HR team. Sometime in the last month, really great team. So thank you so much. sometime in the last month. Really great team. So thank you so much for helping to guide them. They've also, kudos to HR for working with the Sheriff's Office to attend to their hiring needs, some really critical, critical staffing needs throughout the organization. So, yes, welcome to each of you. Onto number three.
You don't have enough chairs. It's an exciting week.
Yes, indeed. So Erin and Pablo, welcome back, Ms. Doyle.
Thank you. I'm not here to introduce myself as the new employee, but I am here to introduce you to the newest member of our GR team, which is really exciting because we have a lot to do, as you're well aware. We're excited to have Pablo Nieves Venezuela join us as our third member of the GR team. He started yesterday, so he knows everything he needs to know. He represents the breadth and width of this county because he has, grew up in Hillsborough, lives in Forest Grove, worked for Representative Helm in the Beaverton area, and Representative Neuron in, in Southern Washington County. So he already understands everything that we do here. So he's ready to get started. I'm excited to have him here. After a number of years at the legislature, the number of other staffers that came up to me and when, during legislative days and said, so you stole Pablo? That's not fair. And I said, I'm just gonna keep picking off your best employee at a time. We have a lot of deep bench experience within the GR team of dealing with, at the state legislature. And Pablo's going to be missed there, but very excited to have him join us here. We have not sorted out portfolios completely yet. We're trying to continue to work through that as we have one more hire to make. But excited to have him join the team. And was there anything you'd like to say?
Yeah. Thank you so much, Erin, for the kind introduction. And I just want to say, as somebody who grew up just north of here, down First Avenue, I'm just really thrilled to be joining the team here at Washington County. And I feel really honored to be able to serve all of the people that are working on behalf of various communities throughout the county. As Erin mentioned, I've lived in a lot of different parts of the region and, and served various communities here. And it just feels really full circle for my career to have brought me to this, this position. So I just want to thank you all so much, and I'm really excited to be part of the team.
And I would just like to add that in talking with Sheriff Garrett on Friday, Sheriff Garrett was not part of the hiring process. However, he did make note that Pablo, you are one of the top stars in our community and was so glad to see Pablo be a Washington County staff member as Pablo was serving on the Sheriff's Latino Advisory Committee.
And as the, the CAT Legislative Tour highlighted last week, there's a lot of work to ensure that we educate our legislators on the fact that counties are instruments of the state and our portfolio is owned and directed by them and that the state is on the hook for more than just education funding.
And just to underscore that importance, Ms. Doyle had mentioned the additional GR manager that we will be hiring. I have previously spoke to you individually, but just for members of the community, we will be using ARPA lost revenue dollars to hire a limited duration GR manager. So why? Because it is important that we at least maintain the revenues that we have for continuity of government services and actually seek to have cost recovery of state mandated program requirements that we see increasing. So I just wanted to just share that for the community's benefit as well. Thank you.
Well, welcome Pablo. And it should be noted that you live in the finest district.
That's true. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you all.
So a couple of just brief operational updates. Oregon Shakeout is this Thursday. Washington County will once again participate in the annual Oregon Shakeout Drill this Thursday at 10:19 a.m. On October 19th, employees and our public will be asked to drop, cover, and hold on. There are two new aspects to the drill this year that I want to highlight. The drill will start in several buildings as usual with a public address system announcement. But there will only be a single, one-minute-long announcement this time. Employees and buildings without public address systems will organize their own announcements. Another new aspect to the drill will involve a post-incident check-in using our internal employee alert system. Following the one-minute drop, cover, hold-on drill, employees will receive a text message or email to their county email addresses with instructions on how to reply with each other's employee status. This is just one other example of how we continue to practice our emergency management techniques in the case of an emergency. ERP project update, which for members of our community, that is our enterprise resource project, which is in essence all of our internal technology operating systems. Our ERP project management team's main focus to date has been on vendor selection and backfilling county project workforce members. The ERP management team and representatives from various county departments came together to review seven proposals. Each proposal was around 500 pages in length. It was determined in consultation with Barry Dunn, who is our outside consultant. Two of the vendors did not fully meet the county's ERP requirements. And so we've moved forward with five vendors that we're currently looking at and moving forward to vendor demonstration. Barry Dunn is working with vendors to schedule those demonstrations, which will run through November 9th. We do have a BCC presentation planned for December 12th and then a project implementation kickoff in January of 14. The ERP project management team has been working hard on recruiting and onboarding our temporary workers throughout the county who will be 100% allocated to the project. The team, as your board may recall, we estimate 34 backfilling resources as of this week. Finance has backfilled seven positions, HR backfilled two, and ITS has backfilled three. So what we're doing is they're learning our ongoing staff work to provide that update or to provide that backup so that our ongoing staff can be focused on that ERP project. So really proud of the work that HR and our internal teams have been doing to fill these, fill these important positions.
Thirty-four. That just goes to demonstrate what a huge effort this is. Yeah. Much bigger than my prior experience. Ooh, wow. Okay. Thank you. Onto you, Mr. Anderson.
Good morning Commissioners. I'm going to share with a theme that Tanya started today and introduced to you a new employee in our office. Am she ready?
Welcome.
So we're really excited to have her. She's going to be on the litigation team. I previously explained she has a lot of experience in the legal field as well as nonprofit experience as well. So she started this morning. So just, just starting out, you know, trying to find, you know, the parking lot and all that. So, but I invited her up here to give a few words to the board and tell you about herself a little bit.
Good morning, everyone. I am so thrilled to be here. Still getting my bearings, I think. John Mansfield.
Takes more than one day.
Yeah, a couple hours. And I have previously in my legal career worked for the federal government as a prosecutor in New York City. Since coming to Oregon, have been a state securities regulator, have been in private practice. And most recently, I worked for the city of Portland on the consent decree with the Portland Police Bureau related to police reform. I am so excited to be here, to serve the people of Washington County, and I look forward to working with you all.
Well, not only do we organizationally keep our legal team busy, but outside forces do too. So Brad has done a good job of helping us appreciate the, the nature of the situation such that Washington County is currently a place to file some interesting lawsuits. So we, we've come to understand that you have some interesting work ahead of you. So thank you for joining us. We're really excited.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Brad.
Speaking of new and interesting litigation, you may have seen in the news that there is a proposed class action regarding the proceeds of tax foreclosure property. I won't speak on it a lot today, but just be aware that we're, we're working on that issue internally. We're setting up some processes for the tax foreclosure that just occurred on last Friday. And then, and then we're working on the issues raised in, in the proposed class action lawsuit. You have an item on your agenda today to sell a tax foreclosure property. Don't be concerned that this is going to be implicated. This is property. Commissioner Rogers will probably know it well. This is the former Tanuary property in Sherwood. So this property is worth less than zero. And the city of Sherwood is going to, is, it's supposed to purchase the property. And they've gotten some funds to remediate all the environmental damage on the property. And then they're going to use it for some county needs down there.
Boy, that's been underway for some decades. Yeah. Wow.
Yeah.
Brad, I did have a quick question if you're taking right now. I was gonna ask you this when we got to our agenda. The whole issue of foreclosures is a little dicey right now. I guess I would put it that way. Should we in any way back off that action today? I, sure would be an ideal person to buy this. And I suspect they're just gonna simply do a little excavating and a little bit of moving in dirt and park or something. Because that's, that's, you know, you know what the rendering plant was.
We're not concerned about this particular piece of property. Like I said, it's worth less than zero. It, you know, it, it's not a surprise that the former owner let it go into foreclosure because there's still.
Walk away from it, yeah.
They want to walk away from it, but actually they've, yeah, they, they've got some responsibility as well.
Alrighty. Thank you. We'll turn it over to you, Ms. Taniguchi. Dennis, Clean Water Services.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. And good morning, Board of Clean Water Services. I'm gonna ask Mark Jockers and Ann Lee to come to the podium here. So it's really a day of announcements, not only for Washington County, but for Clean Water Services.
Introductions all around.
I'm just delighted to announce that Ann Lee is joining Clean Water Services. She'll be the executive assistant to the chief executive officer. And Ann has been a long time resident, she and her family of Washington County since her family moved from Oregon, moved to Oregon from Maryland in 1986. She maintained her residence in Tigard while she was working in Washington DC for close to nine years. So she went back and forth between home and, and work. And Ann is coming to us from the US Supreme Court, where she was the judicial assistant for Chief Justice Sonia, or Justice Sonia Sotomayor. So we feel really lucky. And I'm in the unenviable position of sort of arm wrestling the chief justice for Ann's time because she is onboarding her, her replacement and she's very dedicated to that. So she is doing a bit of two jobs as we, as we transition. But prior to that, she worked for the dean of Lewis and Clark Law School. She brings just great skills and we're really delighted to have her support our executives at Clean Water Services through our, our group. So she's thrilled to join Clean Water Services and be back with her family and her friends. And we're just so like, lucky to have her. So, Ann, I didn't know if you wanted to.
I'm, I'm just, I'm sad to leave an amazing woman, but I'm here to support another amazing woman. So I look forward to supporting Diane and the board as much as I can. And I'm happy to be back, giving back to the community and working in the county that I've been with for all my life. So, thank you.
Yasi, were you going back before?
I was.
Oh my goodness.
Lots of miles.
You live in Tigard?
I live in Tigard, yes. And I'm, yes, I take my waters all the time.
I want to thank Kathy McCandless for her work with me. And she's really excited about the opportunity to become part of our culture equity and learning team. She'll contribute her expertise and passion for the ongoing efforts to foster our culture, to have employees that can learn, grow, and thrive at Clean Water Services. The team is really excited on how we're expanding our culture equity and learning capacity and our employee engagement activities, our learning opportunities, and the culture building initiatives. So we can deliver on our engaged and learning-oriented workplace culture. And that brings me to Mark Jockers. It was an item at our board learning that we weren't able to cover, but we really appreciated the time that you had with us. And Mark will talk about how we're moving this item to a roundtable, I hear.
Yes, thank you. And thank you very much, Chair and, and Tanya, for helping to get that on the November 3rd roundtable. We'll put that, that's our workforce development and learning item. The other thing is we also have a follow-up scheduled with you, Director Willie, for the stuff that you missed on Friday. So we'll meet with you on the 30th of October.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, welcome, Ann, to the world of utilities of the world. We are all fortunate to get to be associated with this really stellar municipal utility that contributes not only to the health of Washington County and the Toowalatin River, but also contributes to science and technology across our globe. Because as I often credit Mark Jockers for instilling in me, all water is recycled water. So, and now we are all having our best day. Which is part of the culture equity and, and learning thrust of Clean Water Services. So we are a very engaged Washington County Board of Commissioners, but also a very engaged Board of Directors for Clean Water Services. So we try to make sure that we are attending to both agencies through the course of our work and always enjoy our learning days with, with the staff of Clean Water Services. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Well, for, yes, sir. Mr. Willie has an idea.
I would like everyone in the room who's been here less than six months to stand up. That's you, Molly. There you go. Yeah, welcome to the team. It's exciting. So thank you.
We're pleased to have you as part of our Design the Future and One Washington County work. I just wanted to draw the board's attention to a couple of updates to the board agenda for our 10 o'clock meeting. We have added a third public hearing. This one is one of those finding out that where a road is and the legal location of a road don't quite match. So we have some adjustments to make. But I also want to highlight that on our consent agenda, item 14, we had previously taken action to approve the North Hillsborough Industrial Renewal Area Plan. And somehow, when the city brought it to us, it had a plethora of edits that were needed as it went through the city council action. And if I might, between especially Mr. Anderson and Mr. Roberts' team, I'm just looking for some confirmation that someone on our staff did indeed review these, this updated document, which I have not done, to verify that these are really minor edits. And that somehow some important numbers didn't get changed in a significant way.
Yes, Chair. Thank you for the question. I did work with Dan Yaz from the city of Hillsborough, and we went through and looked at the edits together. And so I feel confident that they are very insubstantial, minor cleanup edits that were made. And again, the apologies for the discrepancy there. Our timelines for submittal of the agenda item that was reviewed by your board and for the city council were different. So we were just looking at a version that was a little bit outdated.
No worries.
Just want to make sure we get those two synced up.
I got the confirmation that I needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or? Any other questions or, or comments with regard to today's business agenda? Nope?
Well, I, I do want, Brad, going back to that property sale stuff, we've got a number of property sales in this. There's...
They're not all tax foreclosures.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. I just wondered, it just seemed like there was a lot of them.
Yeah.
So, and I didn't pull them up and look at them, but...
Oh, I did. I went through them all. It's really the due diligence of our facilities fleet and parks team.
Okay.
Going through all these slivers, so to speak, of, of properties that were, have been needed over the course of time for different projects, for right-of-way for construction, and just closing the loop when those projects are done to get those properties available and back on the private tax rolls versus being publicly held by us. And it's good thorough follow-through by our staff.
No, thank you for that. I appreciate that. Because it, certainly the numbers aren't very big. $50 for one and...
Yeah.
You know, so Greg, my chat.
Yeah, I mean, we, we acquire property in a variety of different ways, some for road projects. And, and then, and then as, as, may not be a surprise to you, or maybe, often when, when people sell property, they leave off slivers. And so the prop, in the, in the legal description. And so we end up with six inches, a hun, you know, 100 feet long periodically. And so we have an entire process that we go through. It's statutory process. We're offering that property to adjacent property owners if it's under certain value and that you can't build on it, et cetera. And so that's really what this has done. And our, our property team has done the work. And that's where we're at right now.
Thank you, Brad. I appreciate that. And Chair, thanks for that explanation. So that's...
Terrific. Alrighty, so we will pause our work session here.
Chair Harrington, I have my hand raised.
Oh, thank you.
I, Chair, I have a question on the, one of the, on our regular agenda board meeting this morning. One of the items under public hearings, item number three, which was added yesterday. I have not yet been able to successfully access that document and read it. I'm wondering how significant it is to be able to...
I don't know why you weren't able to access it. I was able to download the updated packet yesterday and review it. And we'll be getting a presentation on it from Stacy Shetler. It's very straightforward and much like other examples of, of roads in the county where the legal descriptions and the physicality of the road did not match. So he'll be taking us through all that and holding the public hearing.
So there will be a presentation on the content of this information. And I'm not sure how I wasn't able to access, but every time I click on it, the, I'm rerouted to the iCampus website.
Yes. Yeah, same thing.
Same thing for you. Yeah. So I don't know why you're able to access, but I have not been able to access since yesterday. So, and I tried multiple times. And I tried shutting my computer down and restarting, but...
We understand. It's confirmed on this site.
And to confirm, Commissioner Phi, there will be a staff presentation. And so that will be an opportunity for you to ask questions. And we'll take note of the technology issue because it sounds like Commissioner Willie had the same issue. I know I was able to open it up, but Clerk Moss will look into it. Thank you, Clerk Moss.
I'll, I'll send it to you all right now.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So we're going to pause here in the hopes that we are able to be done with our regular business meeting before the 11 o'clock hour so that we can pick up our work session at 11 o'clock. Thank you.